Quick change to the agenda. Andrew feels that the fiscal management policy should go to the Finance Committee for review before the Board discusses it, so let's just kick that up to pass the consent agenda and we can just, you know, send it to the Finance Committee and have discussion. And I'm assuming it's going to be on Board. And then we can just get that out of the way. All right. Do any public comments? First order of business? Great. I'm hearing none. Let's move to consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
May we approve the consent agenda?
Do you have a second?
Yes.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So, policy discussion, fiscal management policy. Andrew, you want to make a motion to send it to the Finance Committee? Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Let's make a motion anyways.
Yeah. Motion to send the fiscal management policy to the Finance Committee.
Second?
All's in favor? Any opposed? Great. So, Hope and Emma were not able to make the meeting, so we're not going to have the learning focus portion, which gives us one item left.
Two.
Well, one item with two, so, yeah.
Neither quickies, I suspect.
So, first we're going to hear about language immersion from Mike Berry, and then we're going to talk about sex and drugs.
You're the lead-in to sex and drugs?
Yeah, always. I like to open for Mike. Well, thank you for having me here. I believe in your packets, you had a document that kind of outlined a timeline for our language immersion exploration. Essentially, the big highlights of that are forming a committee that will look at some of the big questions around language immersion in Montpelier-Roxbury. The process, the consideration of if we're going to make a recommendation to the superintendent for the following school year, what timeline we would have to keep, but with the expectation that if we need more time, we take more time. I mean, we just do it right and we do it thoroughly. I've outlined a lot on the document, just in terms of the makeup of the committee, the process of questions, the role that I play in the committee, and then we're basically ready to start getting going, get this conversation started. I do have a dangling conversation with the Center for Applied Linguistics. They have agreed to work with us. I just have to work out the details, so I don't have a lot of those details with me tonight. The person that is assigned to our region has been traveling as part of her job, so she hasn't returned back to the office in Washington. I can answer questions, or I can dig in a little bit deeper? I'm not sure where we want to go.
Can you go through the timeline, Mike?
Sure.
In thinking, like, just from your brainstorm and your experience?
Yeah. So, right now, essentially, what I'm going to try and do is get in front of a lot of people, starting with our own staffs in each building. I have time with each staff to kind of talk about what language immersion is and what it isn't. That's part of many lessons learned from past experience of implementing this program. It's important that educators in the system understand what we're trying to do or what we're looking at and what we aren't. So, that's what I'm doing in terms of staff, and then I'll also be offering at least probably two parents and community member information sessions, where I'll kind of walk through the same timeline of what our questions are and solicit some folks to join the committee and talk about the process of joining the committee. So, that's mainly what I'm doing between now and the second week of June, is really getting going on that stuff. We've already created a webpage, and for information, another lesson learned is to be totally transparent with this process and to be able to share a lot of information, a lot of resources. We'll probably video the parent and community sessions to people that can't go, can't attend. I'll offer to meet with anyone that can't attend, all of those things, really going above and beyond to be able to connect with people and share what's going on. In July, the committee would meet, talk about the process. I'd like to invite a representative from Chittany East that does have a language immersion program right now to come and speak to the committee about the process and implementation, be able to answer some questions. We'll form our own questions about Montpelier-Roxbury and what this means. We'll talk about probably some research assignments in between for each representative on the committee. So, here are our big questions. Let's go out and let's talk to some people that have programs. Then we'll review some of the information from Cal about their guiding principles. They have a really thorough process available online for committees to walk through, considering logistics, sustainability, curriculum, culture in the schools, cultural identity standards, all of these different things. And then in September, we hope to visit a program as a committee and also meet with the Center for Applied Linguistics. November, finalize our recommendations, so that if there are any considerations in terms of budget, we would have that information in a timely manner. But like I said before, if we get to that point, we still have a ton of questions, that's fine. Let's adjust the timeline and do it right and have a good conversation as a community.
Bridget?
Thanks. This is so exciting, and thank you for coming tonight. It's great. I actually have several questions.
Okay.
The first is, actually, this is not a question, but it's just an observation. There was a committee that this district had that I think worked very hard on foreign language issues that predates all of us that are here. Actually, I think only Michelle was actually here when that committee existed.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to flag that because it predate -- there's still a lot of parents in the community that worked very hard on that, and there was a lot of frustration that that committee did that work and nothing came of it. I'm not -- I assume the report is available in the district.
I will share, I actually met with two parents that were on.
That's great. I was just going to say, I think that would be great to try to continue that loop, because I think those folks did a lot of work and they just didn't.
Can you mention that?
Awesome. All right. So, I just wanted to try to find a way to bring those folks into the process to some extent.
Yeah.
And then I was curious about the parents whose kids might be in the program and how you see that, like, because this process, which is great, will involve a lot of contact with parents, but it was occurring to me that the parents whose kids might enroll in this are not yet in the district, or they don't have kids in the district yet because they're younger. And I'm interested in your reaction to that, and also, is the -- is it specifically what's under consideration, starting in kindergarten, or is the possibility of it being in preschool on the table but not yet decided?
Yeah, it's a great question. I'll talk about a couple of things. One is that, yeah, you're right, that the target audience sometimes for this in terms of parents is two or three years out in terms of when we would start. So, I just, I tend to be upfront with that. We do have census information, so I'm able to share this and canvas a broader group of people, talk to preschool families specifically, send home information, do those things, and try and involve them in that way. The other thing is that I would say, we looked at preschool and those components and when to start, and the research is pretty solidly clear about the developmental guidelines and that kindergarten is the best target year to do that, for a lot of reasons, including that it's a full-day program, those kinds of things. It doesn't exclude language work at preschool level, but they were very specific -- last time that I spoke to them about this, they were very specific about what to do and what not to do with that. It's mainly exploratory, it's play-based, it's a lot of opportunity to hear different language, but it's not as structured or immersive as we might do at a kindergarten, particularly in a language immersion program. So, that's what I know about that conversation, but I think it's worth a conversation with preschool, once we get established, if we get established, what that would look like. But you're right.
Thanks.
You're talking to parents whose kindergarten students are going to be coming in potentially one or two years from now, and that's a group that I have to go out and seek to a degree in this conversation.
Great. Thanks.
So, I have a question, because it looks like you're doing this, which is great, but somehow I thought we were hiring a consultant who would evaluate our situation.
Yeah, that's the Cal, that's the Center for Applied Linguistics. So, those folks would come a total of four to five times, full days, and also provide us research support in between.
Oh, okay.
So, they'll be extremely helpful. But they're from Washington DC, so they will potentially only be here a couple of times. We are, however, talking with Chittany East about partnering on having these folks come in and doing potentially a regional event, because there are a lot of schools that are looking at this, so we may be able to benefit by hosting that or having them a little more accessible. So, we're working on that as well.
I'm loving the fact that you're going to go visit a program that exists, and it would be lovely if staff, some staff could go with you.
Yeah. The committee would have representative members from the Sapp, General Education, also English Language Learners, Foreign Language Instructor, things like that. Depending on where we go to visit, that makes a difference.
Right.
You know, Chittany East is relatively close, and you can access that pretty easily. I think it would be valuable to also go to Mendon Upton in Massachusetts, which is a long-established program.
Oh, nice.
But maybe with fewer people from the committee.
It's just always nice to see it in practice.
Agreed.
Especially if you're not sure of it.
Yep.
Andrew?
Sure.
So, I think this is a very thoughtful process, awesome level of engagement. General question that I have is, what is the time commitment going to be for committee members? Like, how many times a month do you anticipate they'll meet?
Sure. I anticipate it would be about one time a month between now and November of next year. That's just based on my past experience, but that doesn't preclude, you know, research assignments outside of the meetings, or potentially subgroups of the committee working on certain things, or maybe it will just go super smooth and we won't need that many. But I would anticipate no fewer than one.
Thanks.
We do have a questionnaire for folks that are interested in being on the committee. It has about five questions, just generally asking about their interests, any questions that they might have ahead of time, things like that.
Other questions? Is part of the evaluation process going to be also looking at the latest shoes in space?
Yes.
Where to physically house this?
Yes. Yeah. A big part of this process is really sustainability. It's a five-year and beyond commitment in terms of space, staffing, curriculum development, all of those things. So, there's a lot of logistics that we'll be looking at. Part of my role with the committee will be to research those things and provide feedback to the committee on what I found, in terms of facilities, staffing, embassy programs, partnerships, all of those different things that we can find and talk about.
I'm thinking space. They're all in a space now. It's a reorganization of the people that are in it. That doesn't solve staff issues, but it's the same kids.
Bridget?
I have one suggestion that, just based on the Board's ongoing conversations and commitment to the diversity, equity, and inclusion principles and policy that the Board adopted, and I know from conversations that we've already had with the superintendent that those principles are already part of the thinking around this program, but I wondered if maybe we should say that in the document?
Yeah.
So, I just throw, I mean, it's not the Board's document, but I just throw that out there for consideration of whether that should be part of the tasks of the committee to ensure that any program.
Ensure that it's a possible opportunity.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's a great idea.
So, I'm curious, Michael, would it be possible, the calendar is very specific in terms of the instruction and the program itself, and obviously you're talking about soliciting parents for the committee right now, it would be nice for parents to know maybe some mile markers for when feedback would be available from them, or to get maybe some rough drafts, just for more parent and community input, to expect that, hey, by July, we should be able to see a rough, rough draft, or just to have?
I think we can do that. I think we can be really transparent. I'm hesitant to guess on where the committee will be.
Sure. But just making sure that we do have opportunities to get.
Yes.
Great. Yeah. Now, this is super exciting. I'm really glad we're doing this, and as Bridget mentioned, you know, this is something the district has been looking at for a while. It's been tough enough to crack, but I think it's given the realities of the 21st century world, you know, I think we need to broaden language opportunities, and this is really creative, a great way to do it, so I'm excited to see how this process unfolds.
If a community member was interested in being on this committee, they would?
So, we'll be making a post. I was waiting until this meeting to see if there was any additional feedback. We'll be making posts and communications. We'll be going out through the schools to community members, but also very publicly soliciting information. Like I said, in the next month, the general goal is for me to get in front of a lot of people, you know, at a lot of different places, and just talk about this. So, we'll get it out there, and then there'll be a link where people can fill out the questionnaire, and then it'll go right to me.
Oh, nice.
Talking about that audience of the kids, the parents, or the families that would have kids in a program such as this, does anybody have any suggestions for Mike, or otherwise suggestions for how to get information out to those families?
Childcare centers?
Yeah. Well, I mean, we've got kids right now in the pre-K program, which we, you know, didn't have in previous years, so we can, you know, I think we got microphones out to certain people that we didn't have before, but.
The library.
Might be good. The library, and also, you know, some of the private providers like, you know, Turtle Island and Children's House might have some parents that would be very interested in.
We have some students in East Montpelier Pre-K, too.
I have met with parents that were on that original committee, and they've offered to assist in getting the worry out as well, so I plan on calling that in.
Great.
Trying to help us.
And how many Board members gone are you thinking? One?
More than seven. I think we settled on.
One or two.
I think it was one. So, part of, just to be upfront, it's a committee that needs to be somewhat nimble.
Yep.
That's the rationale for the numbers. I believe we said one.
Yeah, that's what I'm remembering, too.
Well, you're lucky, because we're a very nimble board.
Agreed.
Yeah, so, we're going to see who might want to do that, and who has the time and can be nimble.
Are you looking for volunteer right now?
Are you looking right now?
I'm not looking right now.
Okay.
But I plan to see.
Bridget was looking out.
Yeah. I mean, if people want to say they're interested now, then, you know, but I don't think we need to make any decisions, but just, you know, somebody to think about, because it sounds like this might be coming together relatively soon. Okay. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you so much.
Just now stay right here.
Oh, are you on next?
He's in a supporting role.
Yeah, so I think we're going to hear from the Mikes. We're going to hear from a couple of community members who've talked to us and been very involved in this issue, Barbara Hiredal and Andy Crane, and Andy works with Planned Parenthood, so she has expertise, although I think she's going to give us a qualifier that she is not speaking on behalf.
Just name. Mention the name, mention the job.
I'm Barbara Hiredal. Thank you so much for having us. I'm a mom. I have four kids, two of whom have attended Montpelier High School. I write fancy letters after my name, but Andy and I became good friends because she's a midwife. I wanted to be a midwife. She has babies. I have babies. And we share a passion for all things sexuality and talking to kids about sexuality. I run a small philanthropic fund, which has me working in politics, and I'm deeply fascinated by how power works in our country and our culture. And there was really two events over the past few years that you and I talked about a lot, which got us thinking about how we talk about sexuality with our children. And the first was the breaking of the Harvey Weinstein story. I went to hear Jodi Kantor speak at UVM. She was the New York Times reporter who broke the story. And I went with a friend who works as a lobbyist in the State House, who has put up quite a lot of sexual harassment under our golden dome. And it's interesting, as Jodi Kantor's presentation was, in some ways, what was more powerful was hearing the questions that were addressed to her, predominantly by UVM students. And the final question was basically, what do we do with these men after the accusations and the immediate consequences that they may face? And my friend and I, on our drive home, both of us parents of sons, realized, frightened and big and tangled, a question as that is. What really interested us was, how do we not raise another generation of Harvey Weinsteins? Second, Bernie, Kavanaugh hearings. And I'm old enough to remember the Clarence Thomas hearings. And at the time, in addition to the all-white, all-male Senate Judiciary Committee members who were running those hearings, it seemed like, based on polling, there was a consensus among the broader public that Clarence Thomas could not have done these things, and therefore it was completely justifiable to humiliate and vilify Anita Hill. As bad as that was, I felt like in watching the Clarence, I mean, the Brett Kavanaugh hearings, there had almost been a shift to, maybe he did, maybe he didn't, it doesn't really matter, at least when it comes to a man taking power. And I just thought about, as I watched this and had lots of conversations with my 16-year-old son, what kind of a message does that send to our young men and our young girls, that what happens to a girl's body is really not a consequence in terms of our young men's later lives and the power that they may get? But moving, oh, another thing that fed into your and my conversations about this was a study that I read, a poll of high school students and college students, female, was that 70% of them reported that, in their perspective, a positive sexual experience was one in which they were not frightened nor physically hurt. And I just felt that was such a heartbreaking low bar. And we just started having more and more conversations about how are we talking about sexuality with our students? So, I have four kids. I interviewed each and every one of them, telling them about each and every sex ed class you had, and it was fascinating. I think words matter, and this is just one aspect of what we talked about, but, and they did not go to Montpelier Middle School, which is where all my kids have their sex ed, who still live in Chittany County, but they reported that it was completely conception-focused and biology-focused, and I talk about things graphically, so I'm going to use some terms, which I'm guessing will be okay. You know, penises are talked about, testicles are talked about, ejaculation is talked about, but all of my kids reported that, when it came to the woman's body, there was talk of the womb, and there was the talk of the birth canal, and clitoris was never mentioned once. And it's interesting, because you look at some other Western democracies, France in particular, in addition to the teaching of the biology and the very important essential lessons about consent and safety and sexually transmitted disease, they also focused in connection and pleasure and embed the whole idea of sexuality as part of our mixture of full human lives. And I found myself thinking, I live next door to NECKI. I heard a sex therapist talk on the radio back in the 1990s, and she had written a book with a perplexing title of Sex Is Not A Natural Act. And her point was that, of course, there is a biological imperative to sex, and it does produce babies, but in many ways, human beings' relationship to sexuality is quite analogous to our relationship to food and cuisine. So, yes, we all eat, so we don't starve, but for those of us who are lucky to be food secure, there's a lot more to it. And I imagined what it would be like for NECKI students to go through an entire semester in which they learned about the physiology of digestion, how not to pass on foodborne illnesses, how not to force people who didn't want to eat to eat, and how to not cut themselves with knives, all really important valid topics. But I could imagine the students feeling a little ripped off, raising hands and saying, are we ever going to learn how to make chocolate mousse? So, part of what Andy and I have been talking about is, what is the broader way in which we can talk about sexuality with our kids, answer their questions? And what each of my kids reported, that they most appreciated in their middle school's sexuality class was the anonymous question box, a place where they could write down any question with no fear of embarrassment about any aspect of sexuality, both the nitty-gritty of the biology and the anatomy, but also broader cultural questions. And an adult whom they really trusted and respected would take the questions out and answer them and facilitate peer-to-peer conversations. So, hand it over to you.
Sure. So, I'm a mom in this community, as of three years ago, moved here. I'm also healthcare provider, as Jim had mentioned. I am not representing Planned Parenthood tonight, I'm just, just as a heads-up. But I have had the luxury of being a certified nursemaid wife who specializes in reproductive healthcare, who has been able to start working with many youth in our community through their actual healthcare needs. And, you know, one of the things that I've found incredibly interesting is the spectrum of preparedness that the students from this school district have come to me with, because I do a lot of education on this. Some are extremely prepared, but it's to a scary weight. And one story that made me sort of drop everything and say, all right, I always wanted to get into this kind of topics, I'm doing it now, was a young woman, I think she was 17, she was preparing to graduate and go to college last year, and she came in with her mother, and she wanted an intrauterine device. And for those of you that don't know, they get implanted in your uterus, they're a very effective method of contraception, very low failure rate, some of our best, kind of crampy, not super comfortable, definitely, you know, one of the most uncomfortable methods of contraception to put in, but one that's often elected. But this young woman had fear of medical procedures. She had a lot of trauma with, you know, medical procedures earlier in her life, and she was picking this one, the most effective one. And I always ask, so what makes you choose this method of contraception? And she, very calmly, with her mother by her side, said to me, well, I'm going off to college, and I know that there is a better chance that I will be raped than I won't, and I need to prepare so that I don't have a child from that experience. It's one of the few times that I just didn't know how to respond, because that's very intense, to hear a young woman just culturally accept, this is my lived reality, and this is what I know is higher likelihood going to happen, and based on, you know, the assumption of lack of reported cases, we know that we're likely at around like a 60 to 66% rate of sexual assault in colleges in our country. So, you're right, you know, she was correct, it's a higher likelihood that she will than not. So, we have that type of student that, yes, is prepared, but, oh my goodness, can we do something about that, you know, in terms of our community? All the way transcending to the student that I really feel like isn't prepared in a wholly different way, but operating still within that culture, which is, you know, a young woman who comes in for a pregnancy test because her period's late, completely confounded because he said if he was drunk, then the sperm would be drunk and couldn't swim straight, so therefore she wouldn't get pregnant. So, that has a lot of layers of complexity that is also really disheartening, too. And so, you know, that combined with the high propensity of sexual assault follow-up I do see during the course of my week, I thought, we, what can we do? How could we make this better? What's happening in this community? I'm new, I don't know, so I'm going to go start talking to people. So, many conversations with Barbaraina, and I also spent this past school year kind of just connecting with our school, their elementary, our middle school, minimally with the high school. I have young kids, three and a half and six, so I haven't quite gotten up to that realm yet. But the elementary school, when I was speaking with the guidance counselor, she's like, yeah, there's interest, and parents are wanting this information. And I managed to be fortunate enough to connect with Prevent Child Abuse Vermont, one of their trainers there, and, you know, we are so well-supported in this community in terms of what already exists. So, when parents say, yes, please, can I get in on a workshop that's about nurturing healthy sexual development? Boom, we've got like a community partner that has that going on, and it's connecting the dots. So, that's been some of the exploration we've done at the elementary school this year. And then at the middle school, I've been having some really interesting conversations. I mean, from what I hear in the community as a parent, yes, the desire is there to improve health education and sexual education. But when I start talking with educators, there's a lot of fear. The culture that educators find themselves in right now, especially with the Me Too movement, is I'm worried about misstepping. This is a sensitive topic. These are things that are out there in the news, and it's a bit scary, because if I misstep, I could lose my job. Look at all these different examples we've seen in popular culture recently. And so when I was talking with educators in our school district, they were saying, you know, I know this is a need, this is something I'm really invested in, I really feel like I need support from all areas. I want support from the community, I want support from the parents, I want support from the top down, I want administrative support, I'd just like everybody to be on board so that I feel like, yeah, I can tackle these tough topics with these kids who really are craving this information. In a community that, based on my conversations around town, many people seem supportive. Obviously, not everybody's going to be on board, but I think one thing we could agree on is that both examples I gave you of those young women that came to me is not a culture we really want our youth growing up in. And so, one of our community partners, the Vermont Network, did a really interesting study at the end of twenty eighteen, and they said to Vermont youth, what do you want? What would you like out of health education, right? You know, that's a novel idea. And the number one thing that our Vermont youth, this is not even the country, this is like us, said is, I want an askable adult to ask whatever I want of. Someone that's trustworthy, someone that I'm not going to get judged. And knowing teens, like me, in a way where they're not going to have to stand up and raise their hand because it's not the age or the hormonal milieu of what happens, right? So in terms of those opportunities or setting those cultures of that anonymous question box, where someone who is that askable adult can answer those. And, you know, creating a culture where kids, yes, can help shape the education they want, but yes, this is a brand of community context and conversation. And so I feel like that's sort of why we're here today, is we would love the school board to be supportive of something, or maybe a policy level, or whatever it is that could go forward.
I will also add my other son, who attended the high school, he's graduated now, who was very active in the conversation, student-led program that works at Great Culture nationally in Montpelier and at Montpelier High. And he found it such a powerful transformative opportunity, and even wrote his college essay without having been part of the conversation. But it feels like in addition to having the askable adult who's trustworthy, where you can get really solid information back, rather than having sexuality education just be one week in middle school, are there ways to, throughout our kids' education, create episodic forums where there's good, solid information presented, and it feels sufficiently safe that there can be peer-to-peer conversations as well? And one case I forgot, which is relevant to one of my kids, is having sexuality education so focused on biology and conception is not entirely relevant for our LGBTQ students. And are there ways where we can expand the curriculum that acknowledges that sexuality, although absolutely part and parcel of conception, is also much more, so that our LGBTQ students don't just zone out when it's focused primarily on conception? And I will also say, I knew Jill Kruinsky, who serves in the legislature, and she was part of the revising of the state sexuality curriculum, I think fourteen years ago. And in my conversations with her, she said she is entirely open to having conversations with educators and administrators and school boards about how the statewide education could be revised again, because I'm sure that's a big variable. Anything else?
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Very helpful. Mike and Mike?
Just a question.
So I guess if you could give, so just kind of to set the table a little, you know, this is a, this is a topic that's come up, I think, both in terms of how health education impacts how we teach sex and sexuality, but also increasingly how we teach, you know, navigating through drug use and, you know, the various McSignals there. We obviously have, you know, with the legalization of marijuana, and I think a bit of, you know, my understanding is that marijuana use in high school in particular certainly is present and somewhat of an issue. You know, statewide, we have opioid crisis. We also have, you know, vaping and Juul and other forms of taking tobacco and other substances that, you know, certainly I don't fully understand that are relatively new. Yeah, I mean, the, you know, the board does not get involved in setting curriculum or, you know, what's happening in the classroom, but I think in terms of, we hear this from the community a lot, I think there are a set of values that a good portion of the community share in terms about approaching this in a really progressive way that prepares our kids for a complex world and allows them to be, you know, full adults who make wise choices and are able to make fulfilling choices. So I would love to hear kind of what, you know, what the approach is at the high school, what the approach is from a curriculum level, and what the board can do to encourage that, you know, we, one, have given you the tools and the direction to do what you need to do as educators. And then second, I think, you know, a point that was made by Barbaraina and Andy, what can we do to broaden the conversation? Because I think just hitching these complex issues on what we teach in certain classes isn't going to cut it, that this has to be, you know, we have to find ways to connect with community resources, to have broader conversations, to bring, you know, the full adult community in, and really look at this as a community issue, and, you know, the board, as he lays on between educators and the community, I think we have a natural role there. Anyone else want to add before they delve in in terms of things you'd like to either hear or, or things I missed?
I definitely want to hear about the middle school as well as the high school. Mike, save anything?
Sure. So I can speak to this, just tell me if it feels like it's too far afield or exactly where we're looking for. You know, Andy and Barbaraina and Libby and Jim and I met earlier this year, and, you know, that's had my wheels turning and has led to some specific action, too, since that time. And they make very important and well-reasoned points. And health is both a very broad topic and also important and very narrow sometimes when we're talking about real specific kinds of things, so. The board passed a nutrition policy a few years ago, it's F twenty-eight, that addresses nutrition in the district in a real direct way. And that, you know, doesn't touch anything around health curriculum in the way that Andy and Barbaraina are talking about, nor does it sort of get at, you know, this larger cultural issue of misogyny and how, what we can do to unpack that and to improve that experience for our young people and our broader community. So where are we? I think, one, is there's a need for vertical alignment in the specific health curriculum in the district. If you remember, maybe some of you do, that we added FTE to middle school health just recently.
Yeah.
And so there's an element of that taking hold and for those educators to begin collaborating. And Libby's already asked Mike to lead a group of the health educators to get together and to look at, you know, what is it that we're actually teaching with direct health curriculum, pre-K twelve? And so that needs to happen and is underway. And then the second thing is, there's this real need for a comprehensive approach, that there's these real targeted times in a health class, but what else are we doing and can we pull some of those things together and have more of a strategic approach, rather than, the conversation was great at the high school, how much is it dialoguing or working with existing curriculum and courses, including health curriculum? But, you know, our English department did a really thoughtful and progressive gender unit in the English class this year, tenth grade, that partnered with Outright Vermont. And so, you know, how much, would there be need for sort of like an audit to see what we're doing and how those things are sort of coordinating together? We have a wellness initiative, you know, do our guidance counselors need to be a part of that vertical alignment? Do they need to be grouped together separately? Those are all things to consider, nursing, you know, how much is there overlap with what our nurses are doing and how they're interacting with our students? And then, you know, what kind of opportunities are there in the community to partner more and to involve parents? And all to, along all those lines, there's probably an opportunity to communicate. Like, for example, you know, this year, not only spurred by conversation raised in the community, but also just from our own students telling us that in the health curriculum needs a fresh look, particularly around our LGBTQ plus population, we've really worked to make that more inclusive. We've had health educators attend workshops that have been held by the Vermont Higher Ed Collaborative that is really, it's Outright Vermont that's been doing those, and they've, there is such high demand in the state that they ended up running several sessions. So we're not alone in the need to update those experiences and make them more inclusive. And then, you know, there's lots of different quality existing curriculum, whether that be the things that are, many of our students participate in the Unitarian Church with the OWL program, or Planned Parenthood, or Advocates for Youth, or working directly with Outright. All of those are things that have been filtered into our students' lives and into our school life. So should we strengthen those partnerships? Would be one of the questions probably on the table as an opportunity. And then, you know, when you think about the quantity of direct instruction, it's really pretty minimal for middle schoolers to have it as an elective, and that has increased just recently. But high school expectations around the state, including Montpelier, are just a half credit, just a semester's worth of health. And so for us, that's been four units. It's, we've done mental health, addiction, sexuality and disease. And in my conversations with our health instructors, you know, it feels like there's so many things that are left off the table, but you really don't have a lot of, a lot of time with that expectation. So, one of the things we've just were kicking around in this conversation as it's been raised in the community is, you know, maybe we just have to just go to, you know, mental health and, you know, even incorporate addiction into that, and also just doubling our time that we spend on relationships and sexuality, because it feels like maybe that there's a need for that. So that's been part of it, and I think that that speaks to the need for a more comprehensive And the other thing that is missing from the district, which has existed in the past and exists in other districts, is an SAP. And depending on who you ask, that's either a substance abuse professional or a student assistance program. I think sometimes it's not very, how do you say this? It's like, you know, who wants to be sent to see the substance abuse prevention? So sometimes it's different. We just don't have, we don't have one. And I think I might have been part of that in my first month here. We didn't open part-time SAP position, and we also had one and a half social workers in the district, and I advocated pretty strongly that we have a social worker at each building. And part of the bargaining on that was to let go of this unfilled SAP part-time position. And it's just never come back. And so I think, based on what are likely to be high numbers from our youth risk behavior survey around drug usage, that's just anecdotal, and also statistical evidence of the number of students that we intervened with, particularly last year at the high school, that there would be reasonable need for an SAP in the district, to, you know, to be proposed for next year's budget. We also have the Youth Service Bureau as our primary partner for post-vention, a lot of times, particularly around substance issues. And our mental health support primary community partner is Washington County Mental Health, of which the Youth Service Bureau is a part of. And oftentimes, their capacity is lower than our need. We experience that on a regular basis. I won't get into any specifics of just today, but oftentimes, there are students who, whose needs are not able to be met because of capacity with our community partner, too. So that's kind of a thirty thousand foot issue, but it's something to keep in mind if we're trying to build awareness and strengthen our community around these issues, that that is one area that can sometimes be an issue, too. So that's a lot of information. What landed? What did I miss? I wrote that for him.
On that last part, Mike, can you just provide general, I know you don't want to get into specifics, but can you just provide general examples of the types of needs that you feel are out there?
One of the things that I can say with confidence about a state need is temporary residential mental health support for youth in the state. There's always a shortage of beds, and so sometimes, if there's a real shortage of beds, we'll have a student that ends up at the screeners and what that means for self-harm. And the screeners don't have anywhere for them to go, so maybe they're okay to go home.
And if it's not beds, it's people, they don't have any people to provide support to the family, too.
Another example would be that a student has identified need or reference from elsewhere from someone else for a counselor, and they might be on a six to eight week waitlist.
Or more. Part of Washington County Mental Health's challenge is that they're trying to develop different business models, and it's truly a business model. So they're working within this pod function now. And if you're not a school district who has purchased a pod, which we are not because we don't have that great of need, I mean, that's significant support, and they don't have enough to go around for every district, so if you haven't purchased this pod, you can't access their services.
What is a pod?
It's, it's like a group of professionals that work within your school, school buildings, and work directly with kids. So they have, you know, cases and a list, you know, client list, basically. And so places like Washington Central, Northfield and Williamstown have much higher need for that type of support and have purchased pods, and it's working out very well with them in a very collaborative nature. But when we have the one kid who pops up that desperately needs mental health support, because it is with us, we can name the kids, right? We can see them, it's not- We can see them. It's not a group, it's, we can name them. Washington County says, sorry, you don't have a pod. Or, and we don't have any extra people outside of our pods. So it's, it's a business model that also gets in the way of support. However, they don't have anything else to offer kids and families who need the support. And so they get on these long waiting lists. We had a kid on a waiting list for, uh, six months and we finally just went with a different provider. A different provider that's not as strong.
And I, I've found in the past that because they don't have enough people at the state level, they can only pay attention to the most drastic in, in preference to coming up to doing something in preparation. So you don't get to that point. They just don't have the people.
Now with the pod model, they don't, that's not even their priority. The pod is to try to get as many kids supported as possible within school system. So they're, they're working, like, let's keep going with, like, the Northfield, Williamstown district, right? They're working with more kids in that district and they're influencing more kids positively. But it means our kids don't get the service. Um, and we could have the most challenging kid in the state and it wouldn't matter right now for Washington County Mental Health. It just wouldn't matter. It's just not within their realm of ability to support us.
Is there any opportunity to kind of leverage some, some sharing, some economies of scale with some of our neighboring districts?
Not with this type of model. It's not allowable. So I, Mary Lundin and I went to a meeting with them with a region, right? So SOUPs and Special Ed Directors were there from across the region and they're explaining their models to us. And so I raised my hand. I said, I'm a newbie to this county, you know? We have different models in Chittenden and Franklin County. So what I'm understanding is if I don't purchase a pod for my school district, I no longer can access you at all. And they said, yeah, that's it. That's, that's pretty much it. And so then I said, all right, we're done here then. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go find another solution for our district, which is why we're investing in a social emotional learning coordinator.
Do you know if U thirty-two has a pod?
Washington Central?
Oh, you, I know, you were talking about Northfield, Williamstown.
I don't believe they do, but I'm not positive. I don't know. They might. Actually, actually, they might at U thirty-two.
What's the cost?
You know, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I can't help but notice, um, that, um, health is such a broad term. And that's why, you know, our conversation or what we do as action steps could just go in so many different directions, like right, right now. And, you know, one of the things that I, I heard in, um, Andy and Barbarina's points is, you know, an element of toxic masculinity or misogyny as, as being something to, to try to take on as part of thinking about health differently. And I think that, that in and of itself is a really big challenge, but, but one that we're engaged in, I, I think. And that could, could be strengthened. I felt like I left out, like, a hotspot might be, um, like coaching, um, and, and any kind of sports, you know, to, to improve in the orientation with those folks. And then, uh, after-school programming to thinking about, um, mental health and, um, positive role models and, and positive programming. I, I think that maybe I'm jumping in and anticipating what maybe the next question would be, but strengthening those things would be one action step, in my opinion. The SAP probably is clearly another potential action step. The pulling together, uh, within the district to see where we're at and how much we're aligned and how we can move in a more coordinated way is another step. So I, I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, there's so many things that could fall under this as a, as a category. And isn't it kind of like all about, about health? So I'm just sort of cautioning us to, to say, you know, what, what is it that we're trying to zero in on? Because right away, we started to go down the, uh, mental health path and community partners with, with Washington County Mental Health, which is a rich topic. And so, you know, how, how broad might we get if we're not careful with that?
And Mike, just to point out that, so he and I, we've said in what, four meetings around health, four or five just this year? And mind you, I've had no other curricular conversations with parents this year.
And, and on the total ends of the spectrum.
Right, so.
Like, we are being way too explicit. We're giving way too much information.
I want, I want notified so I can pull my kid out of this. Cause it, this is my responsibility to teach my kid to, whoa, no, you're not, this needs to be way more in-depth.
Go ahead.
She had one down there first.
Well, it seems to me like there should be a policy. There's a nutrition policy. I think that, um, you know, the, the diversity, equity and inclusion policy sort of touches on some of this. But, and maybe it addresses it enough to diverse the district. But, uh, perhaps there needs to be something stronger from the board.
And, and I was thinking, since I spent so much time in middle school, and, and about what you talked about was, I'm not sure how, how comfortable the faculty is that, that goes without, beyond the health faculty. And, and you want somebody that kids can talk to, that want to talk to it. And I don't want to add yet another thing to the teacher's plate, but then again, maybe we need some more training or, um, and it's a big assumption. But, um, middle school being a little different, but that's where all the questions begin.
Yeah, I think along the lines of the anonymous question box, I mean, that's just a totally reasonable idea and one that a lot of schools apply. I've been a part of that. I've been in that room with seventh graders. And it was good. And like, well, not in this district, I, I didn't. But, um, I think that part of pulling that team together can be thinking about that, that suggestion and thinking about how to improve, um, the direct instruction around curriculum and, and continue to update it to be as inclusive as possible. So that, that seems like it's in the works to me.
Richard, go ahead.
I'd really like to hear more, if Mike is able to do it, I, I don't want to put you on the spot, about exactly what the curriculum is at the middle school now.
So I can talk a little bit about what we've been doing. And I offer it not as an excuse, but part of the challenge. As Mike mentioned, when we say health, as we started to pull together this group for meeting you with, it went from health educators to health educators and guidance counselors, health educators, PE teachers, guidance counselors and nurses to general ed classrooms. So that was part of, and part of the initial conversation is what is, what is it we're talking about when we say health curriculum? So we started to have those conversations at the middle school. And this is my understanding, I don't want to misrepresent it. But my understanding is that for a period of time, there wasn't health-specific education in at least two grades.
That was my understanding too.
And now they've added it to one of those two. And I believe that the conversation is to add in that final, I think it's seventh grade that doesn't have it right now. So there, that's the conversation that's happening there. I have time scheduled with the health educators there to talk to them. Essentially, when Libby, Mike and myself started talking about this, what I wanted to do is meet with the health educators, which is depending on the school, a variety of different people in different positions. And hear from them what's going on in health education. What is the health curriculum? What is it that, that you see as the challenge? Where do we need to start this conversation? And the immediate, um, interesting thing was that it wasn't just the health educator. It was, oh, you should meet with the nurse as well and our guidance counselor. And we have a parent volunteer in the general ed classroom at the elementary school. So it is a very broad group of people to talk to about what's going on with health education. But it has begun. The middle school has been looking at two specific curricula in terms of what they are doing for health education. And I have a scheduled meeting with them next week to hear their feedback on those two pieces that they've been looking at.
Is that around sex education particularly or just health in general?
I think it's, it's around health in general, however, there's a strong emphasis on sexuality.
And in terms of the amount of time, that's like, uh, what, a six-week segment in a particular year? But I mean, it's not very much, is my understanding.
The feedback I heard from them was that it's not as much as they want to be doing.
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's moved around a lot. I think that that's part of why it has come up in the community is the, the amount of how direct health education that students have had is varied. And I think that that's one of the opportunities that we see collectively, both as a community and as administration, to be more consistent and invest more in it.
And a challenge. What are you gonna take away from? That's, that's a challenge. So.
If you're taking the time for that, why don't you?
Right, right.
Ryan, Richard.
I think it has ebbed and flowed with the priorities of different administrators and different boards, to be honest.
And probably students too, um, slightly related, but maybe moving in the opposite direction. So when we had the discussion last year about adding the extra FTE in the middle school for health education, you know, the argument is made and rightfully so, the kids come to school today with a lot less help from home, we'll say, on a lot of general health, wellness, mental health, the whole spectrum. Can you tell me, do any districts do anything proactively to engage or educate parents to get families or parents more involved in assisting on some of these topics? To, I don't want to say lessen the burden from the district, but maybe. A lot of the conversation from Andy and Barbarina tonight have really looked at like a more global, changing culture and changing atmospheres. And that's not necessarily done just by direct, um, instruction. And it seems like maybe more family involvement could be a piece in accomplishing that. And again, I'm guessing that districts probably don't, but I was curious if there were examples of districts maybe trying to do more to engage or bring parents into the mix?
Yeah, I, I appreciate Andy's point about, um, that we actually live in a community where there are community partners that are possible. And I actually think that there, there's a lot that happens all the time. You know, I mentioned the Unitarian Church, um, that does this OWL program with a lot of our students. And those students often come into our health class, you know, like, I, I know all this, you know, I have seen all this. So, uh, I think that there is a fair bit that does happen, which is why a lot of our, our students, um, are pretty comfortable and in a good spot. The question is, is who isn't that hidden? And how can we engage those families that maybe not, are not already engaged with all that is, is available? And I think that's a bigger challenge because oftentimes those families are, have a lot of stressors and, you know, coming, coming into the library for a few hours on a Wednesday night might not be their top priority.
There are some, some programs in Chittenden County. I know that, and as Libby mentions, it's kind of a different system up there with the mental health providers. I know that Camel's Hump Middle School, for example, has a program for, I forget the name of the program, but it's for families. And they do everything from nutrition education to sexuality conversations, very supportive process. And it's a small cohort of families that are identified of need. But there's a tremendous amount of partnership that happens through that. And then also they do have an SAP model where that person is helping to coordinate a lot of parent education. It's connected to some grants and connected to the CDC's health, um, curriculum and standards. So it's really pretty structured and guided in a good way. But again, as Mike said, it really partners with community partners and there's fewer of those up there. So there's even greater opportunity here.
Are we being intentional about, um, using opportunities? I just kind of drive from, you know, past high school experience where, you know, things like prom, things like the culture on some sports teams, et cetera. Things frankly, that kids oftentimes are very cued into. The at least subtext of some of those things tends to be at odds with other messages we're sending. Are we intentional about taking those opportunities to reinforce the right messages and use those as education opportunities rather than, um, things that might be, you know, counterproductive to values we're trying to instill?
I think in some areas we are, and in some areas we can do a better job.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's, yes, yes and no. You know, I think that there are areas that we can do more. Like the one area that I'm gonna recommend to Renee and to all of you is I think that there's potential with coaches. And remember that our coaches are basically volunteers. Right? A lot of times we have open coaching positions and we're so thrilled for all of you coaches up there. Thank you. Really, they spend a tremendous amount of time with our, with our students. And, uh, so, you know, how might I or the system strengthen their understanding of how to support students and take on some of these issues that are often a problem or could be a problem for our young people? And, you know, around prom, um, yeah, we, this is, that's something that we've done every, each year is, you know, talking about the, the risks at this time of year. Graduation too. We, you all support Project Grad, um, which is an important piece of that puzzle and gives us a chance to dialogue about it. And there's also the challenge developmentally of, of running into the DARE program. I mean, or the impact that the DARE program has had statistically is that it makes it worse. And so last year, we did some direct instruction around marijuana with students. And we had a, we paid a fair amount of money to have somebody come in. We did a parent night, which was not well-intended. And students, you know, I, it was mixed results. Like, there was a little bit of, you, you're so lame, um, you know? And, uh, you don't really know what you're talking about. And so we had a hard time teasing out how effective or how useful that was when we felt like we were addressing and trying to engage our students in a, in a conversation about, um, drug use in a, in a whole school manner. And I'm, I'm not sure, you know, I mean, I, I had just, um, talking to students, there was, um, mixed feedback about whether or not that was useful.
Do you think policy guidance from the board would be helpful?
What would it be?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
I'm daunted by what it would be.
What?
I'm a little daunted by what it would be.
I'm a little daunted by what it would be too. I guess my question is, are? Yeah, given the complexities and given the fact that there is, you know, I, I think, I think most of the community is probably more or less in a certain place. But there are, um, there's probably some of the community that isn't. Would, would you feel more freed up to maybe, um, you know, do things like, work with coaches on this or work with, you know, general classroom teachers that, you know, these are values and these are roles, you know, that are important? And one, that, that we want to take a part in playing and two, that, you know, it, it's okay to have these conversations with kids, even though they're, they're tough and they're in seventh grade. You know, you can, you can field these questions and, um, you know, that type of thing. I'm, I'm not sure either, cause I think it is complex and daunting.
Well, and also, I, I, we don't really have policies that direct curriculum content. But there's been a lot of conversation here from the very beginning about what the curriculum looks like. And so that, when I said I thought it was daunting, that's part, part of what I was thinking about is I feel like we're hearing from the community and we're perhaps experiencing as parents and we're hearing from the educators about, about a curriculum need, which is not something we normally put in policy. And then we're talking about, as Mike said, a range of issues from, um, inpatient residential treatment needs all the way to toxic masculinity, culture in certain areas. I mean, there, there's this enormous range of issues that can fall under this umbrella.
But, I mean, I'm kind of thinking of something, how do you phrase this in a second? To me, there's, there's similar, the most similar thing we have is the DOJ issues. Where we've kind of signaled that this is important and we want. kind of signaled that this is important and we want our district to embrace these values and take this on really, I think, on a cultural and holistic level. But we're not going to say what people should be doing in classrooms, you know, what curriculum changes, et cetera, but kind of have set, you know, a value post in the distance that we really find that, you know, the value of equity, diversity, and inclusion are important to the district, and we want to, you know, support that and, you know, kind of signal that we care about that. And some of these, you know, when you say rape culture, not everyone is going to say, oh, that's something that we should accept and, you know, and be telling our kids it's out there.
I don't think so. I, when you first asked, I don't know, maybe. But I think, given the diversity, equity, inclusion policy that has been passed, I think that as an educator, I would lean on that to be able to point to that around things like, you know, why would you support the conversation? Why would you take class time for that kind of thing? Why would you read, you know, speak in English class? Why would you have, why would you partner with Outright Vermont? All of the things that we're working towards having a more inclusive and equitable, equitably conscious school system and experience for students. I think that you could point to that policy, and I would. And I also think you have a drug and alcohol policy, which is there, you know, maybe it's worth revisiting or something, but it's there. And you have a nutrition, you know, policy. So do any of those take it directly? No, but I sort of agree with Bridget that anything more direct might be curriculum directive.
Yeah.
And I think the SAP EPs, the really taking a look at what we're doing and how we can strengthen and improve that are probably the next action steps, in my opinion.
Maybe it's a question not of a policy as much as, as board we'd expect to report. So we acknowledge it is a problem, we want something, we don't know what it is. So, but could we, in so many months, could somebody tell us how we doing?
Well, one of the things Jim and I were talking about today is having clearly defined goals. Like, I can't tell you how we're doing on something that's...
Not defined, yeah.
Health, right?
That's what I was raising my hand about. I feel like we're still in the process, and it's going to be an evolution probably forever of defining the needs, defining the goals, charting how we want to address them, creating a plan, and implementing that plan, and updating it, and implementing it, and updating it.
Yeah, I think that's a really nice point, Andrew, and this, and in the sense, and this is putting like my fallacies on the, but there's a lot to, particularly the gender piece that is here now that I don't fully understand, because I never experienced it, you know, and it wasn't part of my education growing up. And I don't have a community around me like that. That's a big learning piece for me, and I don't, I'm not alone in that, in the adults in our education system. And so some of this is going to go slower than people want, some people want, because our learning process is there, is there. We have to, we have to allow for that learning to happen, expect it to happen, not say it can't happen, but we have to allow for the time to that, for that to happen, for that learning process.
Bridget?
But I am wondering though if, I mean, the counterpoint to the policy, why a policy is difficult is that it does prompt reporting, and so, as Tina said, having reports back would help the board stay on track about what's happening. So I'm just kind of echoing what several people have said, that I feel like, I don't feel very good about just leaving this meeting with no next step from the board, because I feel like the issue is pressing and that the community concern is really there.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm struggling with how we could have, whether it's pieces of the issue that we know are, the district's moving forward on, and we want to make sure that we're hearing about them regularly. And we definitely want, you know, the community, broader community involvement to be a part of any of those initiatives if they're going forward. Or if it's having the administration come back in a given period of time to have more specific objectives that could then be the basis for reporting. I'm open to different approaches, but I'm not, I'm not thrilled about the idea of just having the conversation and we, if that's the end of it tonight.
Yeah, I agree. I think it would be helpful to kind of scope a strategy, like, what do we want, you know? What would be helpful too?
Sometimes what happens to the board too is you, not you specifically, but somebody comes to say, okay, now we need an SAP person, which maybe I've never heard about before. And it seems to come out of the air for the board. You've been working on it for four years, and now you've decided. So that's my theory of the reporting is not only how you doing, but where are you going? That goal of what do you need to get there? I don't have any idea. You know, I'm twice as old as Libby, so I'm in a different generation of how that goes. So I agree, I hate to leave with nothing, I'm not sure what the something is.
So, this is not, you know, we go through years of doing language immersion discussion, and because it's curriculum-based, it's developed by the professionals who know how to develop the curriculum around it. We support it though, and we're visible about supporting it. This is a different kind of need, and you know, if we don't do this right, kids commit suicide. So I feel a different sense of urgency about the board supporting something to be put together to address these kids in crisis, because they are in crisis. And I don't know what the solution to it is, but just in much the same way that the racial equality question came up several years ago, we took distinct action in response to it, and the kids took distinct action with it. I don't have the solution to the problem, but I really think the board needs to be involved in finding a specific solution to the problem. And I don't, I have to admit, I'm ignorant on what form that that would take. But to me, it almost doesn't matter if the teachers are not prepared to address this. I think the consequences of not addressing it can be tragic. And this is one of those things that we could discuss for years, and I don't think that's going to solve the problem. And I think having a part-time professionals on staff that could actually focus, maybe take one or two parts of it, say, focus on substance abuse and mental health, start with that. And then learn as you go. With that, I would like to really see us put that into place. I know it's mid-budget year, and we did not approve it in the budget for starting the next school year, but I don't think it's too late to do something like that for the next school year. And I'd really like to see us actually request that and move forward to it. I don't know at what place the board actually makes that happen, we can't. But I'd like for us to come out and be public that we recognize the problem, and we are committed to doing something about it, and we support maybe your proposal to add that part-time FTE next fall.
Yeah, I think full-time.
Even full-time?
Yeah. I mean, maybe it's not just the high school.
Right, right, between the two, between middle school and high school, I really, in my own personal experience with two kids that just graduated from high school, I sense a real urgency with it.
Maybe it's a discussion that Libby has with the administration and comes with some thought about how we proceed, since we've all just said we don't know how to proceed.
Or plan.
What they really need the most.
Yeah, what do they need? And maybe they don't know that yet. We've talked a lot about developing systems, and maybe...
Like, Mike just gave us his list from the high school, but Pam and the elementary school principals might have something slightly different, and just have them sit down and hash out. These are the couple of things that we could do almost immediately to see some positive change.
But I do think it's important for us to define the needs. I think in some way, it's putting the cart in front of the horse. Like, it seems like that we're in a process of defining, of defining the needs. And I think that we should do that as a community.
Right, and know where you want to go with those goals.
Well, as the administration, obviously.
The scope of what we're talking about too is a little...
Right, yeah.
Yeah, right, so.
And I do think your equity policy has aspects of it. There's an expectation for curriculum, and the conflict resolution, will educate all students and staff about the significance of how what they say and do affects other students. I mean, there is language in here that can, that can support the work already from a policy lens. It's just how much and when, and what do you stop?
And maybe you just, it's so broad, maybe you just have to pick one thing right now, even though they all seem to be equally important. We have to start somewhere.
Well, I would say that we've started lots of lists, you know? I mean, we're not at ground zero at all on any of those.
I didn't mean to implore that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just reiterating that. It doesn't mean that we aren't without problems, but, you know, if we're talking about LGBTQ+ support, you know, could we do more? Yes. Do, how, can we do a lot? Yes. We're talking about...
Mike, sorry, can you clarify? Are you talking about the high school or the whole district when you're talking about this?
I think the whole district.
The whole district, but I mean, of course, I'm colored by the school, yeah.
We are, and that, you could use that alone. So you have Max Jennings at the elementary school has a group for gender non-conforming students, or students who are questioning that, they have, she has an after-school group, to, just for a place that's fun and accepting and safe. At the middle school, we have GSA, just like we have here at the high school. I think, I think there are active steps. All our staff has worked with Outright Vermont around these issues. We have trainers in-house to work with our colleagues. So there, we have taken active steps in those places. They just may not have ever come to this level to report on exactly what steps we've taken, and it has gone across three buildings anyway. It has not been in focus in Roxbury as of yet, because they're new to, they're new still, it just hasn't gotten there yet.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like there's a, an education component for the board and a communication, I think, and application component too. Because it does sound like we're doing a lot. I'm not sure that story is getting out there. I think, I think what we're hearing a lot is the horror stories. I mean, and let's be honest, this is a tough thing to get. I mean, you know, coming of age is, you know, the focus of a lot of books for a reason. It's a, it's a difficult time, and, yeah, it's a difficult time, it's an awkward time, there, you know, and I think we're hearing the stories of where people feel it's not working. And I think to expect it to work all the time is probably unrealistic, but I'm not sure that the board, the board has a full understanding of all the things that are being done.
To Becky's point, I mean, should a 1.0 FTE for an SAP be put in place? That takes some pressure off of our social workers, and it takes some pressure certainly off of our administrators. It's a collaborative effort with Matt Nysler, you know, so I could see how that, that piece alone could not get rid of problems, but certainly help support our students in a way, and support our overtaxed social workers and administrators in a way that we currently can't support them.
What about if we created, so if we're, it sounds like the board would like something tangible to come out of this, what if we requested an asset map, which would chart out our strengths and resources with regard to addressing these health issues, based on the four buckets Mike brought up before? I don't know if that seems out of the box or not, but that would show us, you know, that would show us, you know, here are the professionals, here are the external groups, here are the different courses that we're offering, that type of thing.
It would also inform the community.
Yeah, it would inform the community, and it would inform us.
The four buckets being the four topics in health class?
Yeah.
I just saw Mike's face next.
Yeah, I mean, he's looking at his face, we're like, where are the four buckets?
Those are the buckets, but something like that.
Something, it doesn't have to be those buckets, but some...
We can certainly do that, we can certainly do that.
And then, then you could show us, you know, where, where do we need, where is the need in light of this? You know, here's, here are all of our strengths, here are all of our resources, but, you know, here's where we really need some extra help, and here's how this SAP would fit in.
There's also going to be a natural, big chunk of the information from the youth risk behavior survey that's going to come out soon.
When does that come out?
Probably this summer.
Jim?
Yeah. Yeah, and so there's, oftentimes, districts will put together a little committee that includes students, and says, okay, here's our data, wow, we're really high in this, really high in this, what are we going to do about it? And, you know, there might be a natural opportunity to utilize that for student leadership, to involve faculty, and maybe, or if somebody wants to join in on that. And seems likely that it could lead to this suggestion that I see a lot of nodding heads for around FTE. And then the other thing, to me, seems like if you're looking for an action step is, you know, I don't want to volunteer right for anything.
But since you're sitting there.
Yeah, he has a team that he's putting together to look at this more direct health curriculum question. You know, maybe there's a little paragraph that ends up in the superintendent's report about what's happening, so you can get an update about that in the short run.
I was just thinking...
What's the plan for community and parent involvement as you move forward with the process? I mean, I heard, I heard a reference to aligning the health curriculum K-12, and I know that you said you're working with the educators as the starting point.
Yeah.
How does that unfold, and how do you wrap parents and the community and students into that?
It's a great question. I was starting with who's teaching health? And, you know, part of the challenge frankly is just the time of year and sorting that out. We don't have a lot of time to pull a large amount of people out of the classrooms, that was a major consideration.
Yeah.
So right now, I think there's a couple of different directions we could go. There is a high-quality inventory around health education. I say that loosely because it involves other things, it involves like nutrition and things like that, that the CDC put out to schools through, I forget the acronym, but it was CCC, something, something like that. In any case, it could be a guiding force for that group, and that could involve representatives from the community as well. And then we can think about what that looks like. I think the timeline is a little tricky right now, it's May. So in terms of that work, seeing how we can get organized between now and the year, and what that timeline would look like, I think is the next question that I would volunteer, Mike, to talk about. So the short answer is yes, community members should absolutely be a part of that, figuring out who that group is and what the work is, I think is the question that I hear from this group.
And how, how do you choose? Like I said, we've had, I've had zero conversations about how to teach my kid how to read, but I've had five conversations with different parents about what should and should not be in front of my kid in health class. So whose voices, I would caution us in thinking whose voices are heard in that. I think it's tricky. I think it's tricky. And we don't involve parents when we're talking about math curriculum, necessarily.
That's right.
For right or for wrong, we don't do it. I mean, I'm not putting a judgment statement on that, but they're not part of the math committee that we're working on right now, so it's a, that's a tricky one.
I do think the idea of hearing, and maybe from your committee will hear about it, I was thinking of Andy saying she came from somewhere else and she knows a lot about it, and yet she went to the elementary school to try to find out, to the middle school to try to find out, okay, what about a parent that doesn't have her background knowledge? Who in the school system would you go to to ask? Who would you, if your child needed help, say they go to? Are we clear about that? Or do we have anybody to go to? You know, all those things are tricky.
Yeah. But to your point, I mean, you know, obviously, one thing that differentiates this is just how pervasive it is with the rest of our lives. I mean, you know, one is not going to have or not have a healthy relationship depending on, you know, what's talking about in this class, so.
Yeah, and we're in a political spectrum that this is, this is in our faces a lot.
Yes.
It doesn't, whichever bucket you're talking about, it's in our faces a lot.
Yeah.
And it gets a lot of news.
Well, it just, the tentacles stretch to, I mean, they're complicated tentacles and they, you know, they intertwine everything, you know, to Becky's point, I mean, this, you know, these are issues that cause people to take, you know, drastic and, you know, very tragic action. So it's, it's complicated and it's high stakes. So I mean, I'm kind of thinking... So I mean, I'm, I'm kind of thinking that just kind of continuing this conversation with the administration, so we're educated and checking in.
I think Andrew's suggestion is a great one.
Yeah, Andrew's suggestion, yeah, figuring out more of what we have and learning more and, you know, just assessing as we go along. It's like, yeah, I, I think there's, for a variety of reasons, a policy probably doesn't make sense and I, I think we wanna definitely stay out of areas that we, that we shouldn't be in. And I think we do have some, some great guidance and policy that, you know, signal our, our values. But I also think saying that we had a conversation about it and we're done is, is not gonna work either for the board and the community. So I think we need to, need to keep checking in and, and learning more and, and, you know, continuing the conversation. And, you know, being part of it too, that, you know, I'd love to learn more about, you know, continue to learn more about the resources out there because it sounds like we do have some great, great community partners and great opportunities to, you know, make this a, well, to take what's already a broad community conversation and make it broader. Other thoughts?
Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you both, yeah. You too, appreciate it.
I'm gonna leave and you're probably gonna keep going and I don't know if I'll see you. So I just want to wish you well and to say thanks for being a part of the planning for the gym renovations and things. I really appreciate that.
Thanks.
I don't see you, I wish you well. See you later.
So I think we're at motion adjourned. I also wanna thank Lisa for all her fantastic work. It's been a pleasure serving with you and.
Is this gonna be your last meeting?
Yes.
We're sorry you're leaving.
I'll let you adjourn your last meeting if you want to.
Oh, I moved that we adjourned.
Second?
Second.
Was it fair? Great, thanks everyone.